Andrew. Okay. All this meeting of Toledo City Council Workshop Session for September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to order. First item on the agenda is my beliefs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
They roll call. We use pen and paper. What's your confidence?
Eric.
What's your mix?
Eric.
What's your burns?
Yes.
That was for Keating.
Yeah.
Council President Bush.
Yes.
I am present. Counselor Sylvia is excused or not will be. All right, our only item on the agenda tonight is the after action review. Yes, sir.
You do still have visitor public comment on your agenda.
Right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address counsel this evening?
Do you know?
Is there anyone online that would like to address counsel this evening?
Please raise your hands electronically, please. We have several visitors.
All right, good.
But. Nobody's raising their hands yet.
Like, our one and only item on the agenda is the after action review provided to us by Jensen Strategies. Eric, introduce yourself and your colleague, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be back. Seems like an old homewake. Um, just for clarification, do we need to pull the microphone closer? Or is this good? That's good.
You're good for us.
It picks everything up.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, for the record, I'm Eric Jensen, Principal of Jensen Strategies. And our firm is the firm that has done the most recent action, after action review. And we're here tonight to present to you the findings and recommendations from that, from that effort. Um, but before we get going, let me introduce Sia Lindstrom. You know me well, so I won't go through much of an introduction, but I would like to give Sia an opportunity to introduce herself.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Councillors. It's really good to be here with you in person this time rather than virtually. I keep saying it's really nice to actually put faces and names together in real time. My name is Sia Lindstrom, for the record, and I am kind of longtime public sector, public administration. I was with Washington County, Oregon for thirteen years as Deputy County Administrator, and then the city of Beaverton for three years as their interim assistant city manager. Just left there the end of December, and I am grateful to be able to now step into independent consulting with Jensen Strategies and, and bring my skill set to help you all walk through this process. It's been a very interesting process, and we're looking forward to presenting to you tonight. And with that, I'm going to let Eric tell you a little bit more about Jensen in general.
Um, does, does the PowerPoint go up here?
That'd be great.
Yeah. So if, just if we go to the second slide on the PowerPoint.
For the sake of anybody who's in the audience, we thought it might be helpful for them to know a little bit about us.
Yeah. Okay, if we go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so as many of you know, we are a management consulting firm. We specialize in local state government. Um, and you know, we do recruitment work, but we also do a lot of organizational development work. Um, what you see up there on the screen, it's our broader team, many of whom you've already met. Um, but I'd like to emphasize the fact that we have a team of experienced public administrators. Um, we've been very fortunate to have such a robust team and very fortunate also to have Sia uh, onboard with us with this, this project. So, um, moving on uh, to the next slide. So zeroing in on the two people you have in front of you here. Um, so we're the, uh, the core team for this, this project. And actually, in reality, I'm just a figurehead. Um, Sia is the one who is the project manager for this project and has, has been doing all the heavy lifting on this. Um, so, uh, but we're both here today. So I'm going to turn it over to Sia to kind of take it away.
Sounds great, and I'm, uh, I'm grateful to have the teamwork with, with Eric on this one. So next slide, please. I mean, thank you. So this is what we're going to cover today. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about what an after action review is. And again, for the sake of the listening audience, I want to make sure that we kind of cover some of the things that you all probably know already, but we'll just review it. We're going to talk a little bit about our data collection methods before we dive into the meat of this project around our findings and observations. So we talk about what we discovered and then our recommendations before we do kind of some conclusions and next steps. Now, we are going to pause in between each major section just to kind of get your feedback and reaction, see what's hitting you all um, and, and interrupt our flow a little bit anyway, too. So just know that, um, as we're speeding through some of this, if you all can plan just during those breaks, that'll be the time to chime in.
We brought no pool noodles. There will be no hitting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good. We will, we will dive in then. Next, next slide, please. So what is an after action review? Well, it's typically part of an emergency management response, and it's used for organizational learning to try to improve performance. We're taking that structure and using that to help you all figure out how to move forward after this past year. You're going to see us use the term crisis for this past year. Um, and I'm seeing some nodding heads, whether you want to define it as a crisis, but, but for the sake of what an after action review is, that is kind of usually what happens. Uh, there's some kind of crisis, some kind of event that happens, then you move to an after action review.
There's another hard case sound word that you could use for it, but just isn't for me at the moment. Rod, do you, do you remember what?
You know what?
Kerfuffle.
Oh, yeah. That was my term, yes.
So that's your very technical terms.
Like that one can happen that the official.
I don't have any certain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it.
So we are specifically looking for the kerfuffle at, um, the, the leadership changes that happened between September twenty twenty four and March twenty five. Now, um, you all have heard me say this before, and I'll say it again. We are not focused on individuals or individual performance. This is about systems, structures, processes, you as an organization. So we will very deliberately not be looking at people individually as part of this. Next slide, please. So what is an AAR just in general? And we're relying, relying on FEMA's actual after action review user's guide that they published in November twenty twenty three. It's a very useful little document, and they want people to use this as a tool and a resource. So we drew from it as well. Next slide, please. So FEMA uses four steps for their continuous improvement. Um, and we are going to step into, I like to say, we're going to do about two point two five of these steps through this AAR. We're going to do the discovery phase, which is about data collection. We're going to do the validation phase, um, which is about analyzing the data and looking at your observations. And then we're going to put a toe in the water around resolution by stepping into recommendations. Now, we're not going to go as far as action planning and those kinds of things. That's going to be next steps, and we'll talk about that at the end. So just know, most of the resolution and the evaluation phase isn't part specifically what we're doing here today. Okay? Next slide, please. Now FEMA talks about the AAR process in multiple steps, and I'm not going to spend time on this tonight. Just know that we use this structure to design our after action review, and Eric will talk you through the methods here in just a minute. We are now in that green box at the end. We've developed our actual after action review products, and we are now looking at the organizational and leadership reviews. Okay, so there we go. Next slide. Turn it over to Eric.
Right. So with regard to how we got to this point, uh, with, with the report and how we gathered the information and we processed the information, um, I'll just walk you through the methods on the next slide. Um, so, uh, and I believe all of you had an opportunity to see the scope of work, so this should just be repetition, I, I believe. But we, um, started off by doing, uh, the key stakeholder interviews, interviews with all of you, interviews with leadership HR and others who know Toledo well. Um, and those, uh, the list of those people will be in the report that you will be receiving later in the appendix. Um, we followed that up, uh, with a staff workshop, uh, meeting with thirteen of your leadership staff uh, to review the findings, uh, get their feedback and their, their insights, uh, from those preliminary findings. I'd like to point out that we also had, uh, present, uh, your now current, uh, city manager, uh, as well as your, uh, previous interim city manager, who were both there, uh, but they were there as observers and, uh, not as active participants, uh, but were, were present, learned. And then, uh, following that, we use that information to draft the report. And so the report that you will receive and will report on, uh, tonight, um, that report, uh, we did road test it, so to speak, uh, with the, um, with your current city manager, your most immediate interim, uh, city manager and a past city manager, uh, J D Richter, uh, who were very helpful in giving us some, some feedback, uh, before we finalized it. Uh, and so that leads us to where we are tonight, we, with this presentation to share the findings and the recommendations with you. And, uh, following this, we'll make sure that you get, uh, a copy of the report. Um, at this point, I just want to stop and see if you have any questions about the process and that we just went through. All right, then I think.
Yeah, just, just one, uh, I know we're not going to, we don't see the list of who was interviewed, but you, you more, um, I won't say more than you, but you give me a little bit more of a clarification of who the twenty four is. I can guess on about a third, um, of that, but, um, it would help, I think, going into this, have a better sense of.
Who that was.
Categorically.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, um, yes, the seven of you were all interviewed for this. Um, we interviewed twelve, uh, city leadership staff, and then we interviewed six, uh, external stakeholders. Now, some of them are, are previous city employees, um, and some of them, uh, like I've got Lisa on the list as somebody who was interviewed as part of this process as well. So that, that gives us, so that's the twenty four in all.
Does it include? I'm thinking about the key stakeholders aspect, and I don't know if maybe there's something prohibitive to speaking to, for instance, a couple of the key staff that are in our locker here, such as the former city attorney, who I know was very involved in kind of the events that had happened, former interim city manager Carrie, former city manager Wiggins. I don't know if there was anything, if they were included, that, that's.
They were, let me, yeah, that, thank you for clarifying that, that question. So let me read to you the, um, external stakeholders. There were six of them on the list that, that included some of the externals. And you know, folks, um, this was a voluntary thing, so people could choose to participate or not. Um, and we did invite more people than, than actually accepted. You should know that, too. Um, so Amber Mathison, uh, Craig Martin, Doug Wiggins, Eric Chambers, Pete Wall, and Wes Hare. So, and then, um, right now she's on the list of current staff. Lisa is on the current staff list, but, but, um, by the time we finish this, I know she had moved on to something else. Okay. That.
It does. Yeah, no, I was just thinking about, we've had so much turnover in leadership and so forth, that there is a part of me that is worried about that little caveat of missing the input of some of the kind of core people who are at the center of this. So it's helpful to know. Thank you.
For asking any questions. Okay. We're going to dive. So now we start getting into the meat of the AAR. Our next question, our next slide for us. Um, the observations. Now, if we've done our job well, uh, there will be a lot of this that resonates with you. And we'll expect to see you nodding your head going, yes. If we've done our job well, there are going to be some of these things that are uncomfortable and that you may have a, a more difficult reaction to. Um, and we expect both of those things, and we're going to lean into those, and I know you probably do as well. Um, I will say, one of the things we should just keep an eye on is when we run across those tension points, it's actually a good thing because change management tells us that those tension points are actually biggest opportunities for us. Okay, so let's, um, let's just make a note of that, um, and we'll, we'll keep an eye on things, too, where things resonate and where things get a little more difficult, because I think that's going to be important, and that will be as well. So, um, uh, as we go along, we're going to periodically share some direct quotes with you, um, and you'll see those quotes in the report as well. Um, there was a lot of really wonderful stuff that came out of the interviews, and sometimes we wanted to have you hear their words directly. Um, so next slide, please. So we're going to use FEMA's format for observations, and this is what FEMA uses. Um, they want us to do a topic and then a specific assertion, in other words, what happened? And then what the effect was. So we're going to use that, that structure, um, for everything that we do here next. Next slide. Okay, here are the topics. Seven topic areas that emerged out of the interviews. Um, and it's everything from, you won't be surprised, complaint processes in difficult HR situations, role clarity, administrative leadership vacuum, um, continuity of committed staff, we'll talk about that one, cohesion for both city council and executive team, and then there's a section on community. Um, so those are the seven topics that we're about to dive into. Now, um, and each, uh, we're going to walk through each and turn, and we're going to talk about what happened and what the effect was. And Eric and I are going to trade off, uh, these topics as we go, just to shake it up a little bit, so you don't hear one voice the whole time. So next slide, please. So topic number one, here we go. Compelling complaint processes in difficult HR situations. So here's what we heard happened. There was confusion in the organization about how to handle staff complaints. And there was confusion in addition about how to deal with difficult personal interactions that didn't always reach the level of complaints. And even with, um, some performance and disciplinary issues. Many of you talked about the fact, um, that, uh, this was caused at least in part by the fact that you didn't have a dedicated HR professional to help guide you through these difficult, um, situations. Hmm. So the impact of that, it's not surprisingly, was, um, that the responses to some of those complaints were delayed or inconsistent. And that actually exacerbated the situations, made them even worse. And I'm seeing nods of the head on that. Saw stuff you lived through, right? Now, that also had a negative impact on staff morale, on performance, and on retention. I would say it had a negative impact on you all as well. And it did ultimately add costs to the city budget to deal with fallout. So that's topic number one. See what happened and the effect. Topic number two, Eric.
The second topic is, uh, role clarity. And, um, one of the things that, uh, that came about was really just was exacerbated by the fact that you were experiencing a leadership vacuum. Um, and so when you have that leadership vacuum, you, um, you have the, uh, the consequence of, of people not necessarily knowing quite where their roles are, and that's what happened here. Um, that you as council members, uh, were not always working within your respective roles as counselors, uh, and particularly as it related to personnel issues. Counselor?
Can you clarify, what leadership vacuum are you referring to?
Yeah, so uh, as you had gone through, uh, transitions in your leadership and the, and without, uh, an administrative head, if you will, um, you, you ended up with a situation where that key position uh, was not available to navigate, um, the, the communications and the interactions between council uh, and staff and also ability to, uh, manage city as a whole. So that, that created a vacuum where people didn't know quite what, where they were supposed to go, what they, they were necessarily supposed to do, yourselves included. And, um, so it wasn't because, uh, council was, uh, trying to step into it, it's because the bumpers weren't up, right? So you're trying to sort of navigate where you're at, and that's just something that naturally happens. We work with cities all over the state of, of Oregon, and I don't know one city in Oregon that doesn't have a little bit of this, um, uh, this sort of push-pull on role clarity, particularly with, with council and staff. It happens in varying degrees. In your case, it happened at, at a fairly extreme level, if you will. Um, but it's not uncommon for that to happen. So, um.
So you're speaking, just to clarify, um, so you're speaking to the, I'm thinking about the timeline, um, of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, the portion that this number two speaks to is the time from, what, September or August, when Mr. Wiggins was placed on leave and afterward. Part two is not speaking really to prior to his leave of absence, correct?
So I'm going to jump in here.
Because it's my understanding that we're, we're talking about, as we're looking at this, we're talking about essentially a twelve-month period from April of twenty twenty four to March of twenty twenty five.
Yeah, one of the things that we saw pretty clearly in this was that we were looking at this timeframe. And yet, in the interviews, you all were, and not just you, um, all of the folks we interviewed were reflecting back on precursors before that, like what, what helped create that situation? And that was very useful to us to hear all the precursors before that as well. So for instance, under role clarity, one of the things, and I've got a quote here, um, that you're going to see in the report. It says, "We've struggled with a loose understanding of mayor and city council's role for a long time." I, I, I think that was, um, something that just kind of, um, the impact of that compounded over time until you got to this timeframe. So if that helps.
So I'm struggling with your findings a little bit, the effect.
Yeah.
Um, I feel because of, I feel like we're discounting the position council was put in when we had not our interim city manager, but Doug Wiggins, because it was directly because of his actions that certain individuals were pulled into roles that we should not have been in. And then I kind of take a little exception to this inadvertent undermining of the city manager's position. We never undermined Doug's position. I have a feeling this comes from shit kicking by somebody else who didn't like that his role was reduced in something. And so I don't think that that really has anything to do with that that was a part of this timeline. And, um, and so I take exception to that a little bit, but I do still think that, you know, overall, even though maybe not all the particulars feel like they're landing right, I think in the end, it's the same answer anyway. We're going in that same direction, regardless of who and what, because we didn't ask you to tell us who did what, right? We asked you to do the overall process. So I can recognize, even though I don't agree with the particulars in this one.
Yeah, and the.
But I still think the end answer is the same.
Yeah, and the reason why I was interested in the timeline aspect of it is we don't find ourselves with a, um, a leadership vacancy if systems weren't in place or being respected with that, that leader when they were in place, right? So when we're talking about what Tracy is referring to, some of the challenges with city manager Wiggins, some of the positions that he put people in. We had a leader, not a vacancy, where that leader may or may not have been respecting systems or not putting systems in place or, yeah, so, so that's why I was very interested in what I, understand what you meant by the leadership vacancy, because even when he was placed on leave, we put a city, an interim city manager in place. And then, then we can think about, okay, well, that wasn't a vacancy, but the support that they received or the system that was built around them, or the system that either did or didn't exist around them, is the problem more than the vacancies, the problem.
Yeah.
So that's kind of why I was very interested in how we're defining vacancy. So that's all.
Counselor Kaufman.
But that leads to my opinion that that doubt of their ability to perform their job, whoever it was, led to an inadvertent undermining of their authority.
Are you talking?
Because we doubted them. Other people doubted them. And I mean, we as a whole, staff, council, community, you know, different people, different situations, different values. Led to an inadvertent undermining of their. And the process of.
And, and, and I didn't, my question wasn't to evaluate the quality of your findings, it was just to help me understand what the source.
And, and here's what I would say. I made a note of, because, remember I said those tension points are the place for opportunity? And so let's, let's keep talking about that, because I think there's something here that's worth digging into a little bit. Um, um, as Counselor Kaufman, I was, uh, you, you kind of took the words up a little, a little bit, because, because that is kind of what we saw, that's why we use the term inadvertent. It, it, when systems don't function right, and this again, isn't about people, and this is about kind of multiple city council or multiple, um, city managers. Um, when systems don't work, it's natural that you put workarounds in place, but it is all, those workarounds have a tendency then to undermine the role itself while you're doing the workaround. So it's not necessarily a negative thing, it's, it's a recognition that it's happening, so you can fix it. And, and I think that's why we kind of stepped into that space of inadvertent undermining, because you want to, you want to strengthen the roles, and you want to make sure both are strong, again.
But like Teresa said.
Oh, thank you.
Undermining was caused, our inadvertent undermining was caused by their undermining of, with their lack of trust, their lack of performance, their questionable behaviors, their, so.
Anyways.
I have to agree with her on that.
I think we've kind of eaten that one.
Yes, check.
Thank you.
So, uh, the inadvertent undermining of the city manager, I, this is what happened here in the last week or so, where I went into the city hall offices to get copies of flyers made. And I went to Arlene and she said, well, did you talk to Rich about it? Well, why would I do that? I'm not going to bother. The guy's busy. Under, you know, my lack of clarity and understanding. And so I think for, in some regard, when you talked about what are the little nuggets that led up to the big creepy mortal sins? Um, that's, that I think is part of it. It boils down to intention. You know, I didn't mean to, but did you mean not to?
But can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Did Rich then speak with you and, and let you know what, what wrong there and why, and what the correct action is in the future?
Right. I, I was really glad.
But that's what I'm saying. You had somebody that was a competent individual in a role where he could guide us back into where we.
Tracy, that's my comment, is that before, when Lisa was here, I go to Lisa, hey Lisa, and she did it without the undermining of authority, not understanding the structure of it. That was my point.
Yeah, well, and I, I think that was a good point. But also I think that the other point is we have somebody now in place in a leader position, who's acting in that leadership position, who can gently, when he saw that happen, gently guided you back in the right direction.
One of the things I really appreciate about Zach's comment, too, is also just that idea of how we're a small town, we're volunteers, we don't have a ton of resources, we want to just help out and get things done, and we just get things done. And how that builds up, right? All those tiny little things build up eventually to a systemic failure.
Death by a thousand cuts.
There it is.
And, and I'll, I'll add very quickly that I think that's, I think the important, uh, word there is, is inadvertent, for one. Uh, Counselor, I, Mix, I, I thank you for your, for your comments, and I think that the other part of that is as city manager, it's also my responsibility and my role to empower my, my team to do what Arlene did in that case. And rather than just say, yes, absolutely, I will do that, to say, you know, did you clear this with the city manager? So it's my role to help keep you in your lane. It's also my role to empower my team to do, uh, to do that function as well and say, you know, I would be happy to do this for you if, if, you know, Rich says yes, right? I would be happy to do this for you if, if, you know, Rich says yes, right? So I, I appreciate your comments and add that, that perspective as well.
And I'm just going to say that for me.
You're on our names.
Well, thank you, Council, for the, uh, for the questions and input. We, we want to clarify things as we go along. But we also want to emphasize that, that we're kind of looking at a situation as opposed to. Uh, you know, where did this, where did this originate as? Where it originated in terms of a person or whatever. This, we're talking about what is the, the situation that you found yourselves in? And what was the effect? And then we'll talk about where you can go from there. This is intended to be more of a learning opportunity going forward. Um, we do have a lot to cover tonight, um, so. Want to let you know, um, we want to try and keep things moving along if we can, but we also want to answer your questions.
Yeah.
Alright. So I, I see you kind of read through the rest of this, um, but I would just emphasize also that. What you see here and what's been clarified by some of you is that. This is a situation that emerged and things inadvertently. Occurred. And inadvertently, there were workarounds that started to happen. Inadvertently, uh, there were delays in decision-making and inadvertently. The, the city manager, there's role was sort of backgrounded, if you will. Uh, process, so. But let's continue on.
And keep bringing up those, well, we do have a lot to get through, keep bringing up those tension points, because I said, those are the, those are the meaty places. Let's dive into it when they, when you have that reaction to the extent of your time. Yeah, uh, next, oh, thank you. Moving us along. Next one is administrative leadership vacuum. And we've kind of touched on a lot of this already in, in the role clarity that Eric was just talking about. But we had a, a vacuum in administrative leadership over an extended period of time for a variety of reasons. Um, and there was also kind of unclear, sometimes ineffective chain of command. When an unexpected or extended city manager vacancy occurred, you all lived again, lived through this. There was also, we saw over a period of time, kind of a, a lack of confidence in the city manager performance in general. And you all didn't have, um, clear mechanisms as council to give feedback to the city manager to do course correction. And to make that distinction about when is it really serious, and you had to step in, and that did happen, right? And when is it just something that is lower key? And so you'll want, we'll get into recommendations in a bit, I'm straying to recommendations, but. To make sure that you also have mechanisms in place to deal with just general performance issues, concerns as they come up. You all know this too, there was insufficient inconsistent communication with staff about what was happening. You were appropriately advised because it was HR issues not to talk about it, and that, we'll get more into the communication issue here in a bit, but. But we put, we put that here because that administrative leadership vacuum. Also created a problem with communication with staff about what was happening and affected their functioning. So the effect was slowdown in some city services and functions, some confusion about how to move forward. Without key decision-makers in place, delays in some key decisions that you all have heard about, we've talked about the workarounds already. And obviously, the, the negative impact on staff morale and team cohesion. So that's administrative leadership vacuum. Next.
Alright, uh, so number four, the continuity of, of committed staff. One of the things that came out from the interviews was how your staff stepped up. And, um. Everyone pretty much agreed that the staff had, that was here, that, that remained here. Did an amazing job of stepping up and filling some of the gaps that were left. And, uh, in fact, um, you know, there was a quote here. We have an amazing staff, this hasn't really affected day-to-day operations, it's morale and confidence that's been affected. And so because they, they stepped up, the basic services in the city continued on. There was minimal impact to the basic services with a couple of exceptions, those being fire and police. With fire and police, uh, there were different reasons for service impacts there. But they were also mitigated, uh, by some partner agency agreements that were, that were fostered during that time. But again, uh, you had people who were stepping outside the scope of their jobs. Because they had to do it out of necessity. Um, and you had people who were working extra hard. And so over time, that affects morale and it affected your retention to a certain degree. And, uh, some of the professional development as well, so.
There, there was one thing, just a quick comment. That I think is fascinating, I was a very new counselor at the time this, this happened. Um, but one of the things that afterward in this process helped me to reflect on was that one of the most. Briefly crippling things that I kind of saw was how. Once you place a couple of people on leave pending investigation, the possibility that one will get terminated is real. But I struggled a lot afterward with realizing that we were never prepared as a city for what if one of them was. And so one of the things that I think about is the night that the city manager was terminated. Our city attorney went on vacation immediately from that meeting, and this isn't to criticize him, but for that, for doing that. But why didn't we have any sort of blueprint for what would be following that? And that's again, a big systemic thing. But suddenly, for weeks, we are scrambling, oh, who's going to sign the documents that need to be signed? Who's going to sign the checks? Who can authorize contracts? All these things that we suddenly had to do that were realistically questions that we should have been thinking about for the whole six months that we knew that it was a possibility.
I know why that didn't, I think I know why. That was the hardest decision this council has made. And I think there are still some people from this council who question who made the right choice. And that's something that I know I still struggle with. Um, it was, it was horrible, horrible, horrible thing that we had to go through and a horrible decision that we had to make. Nobody tells you when you step up to city council. That you may one day have to sit up here and tell somebody that you just lost your job.
Yeah.
And, and my point is.
But what I, I'm sorry, I'm just going to finish my point here, and you can go ahead and add. And I think the reason we didn't plan is because I think a lot of us. Did not think we were going to have to make that call. I think we felt that we were just going to get through this. Investigation was going to show some things, we're going to fix it and move forward, and that's not how it went. And so I think that's why, I think, I would think we weren't prepared for it, because in a way, we didn't want to be prepared, correct?
Well, and with that being said, and I'm like, I'm going to say cancel clear before I ever say this, just hypothetically. You could die in a car accident tomorrow, I'm not creating that at all, I'm not putting that out there.
Or a counselor burns with words, I could go to jail, I hope that's, but.
But we should have a continuity of, like, we should have a plan in place at all times, you know? Because we just don't know what's going to happen, asteroid, we fall for the sky and. You know, hit rod, who knows, and we need to know, like.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah.
But a lot, a lot of it is just.
But I, I see what you guys are saying, yeah, I know.
Like, just to know what dominoes. Well, knowing what dominoes fall by default was, yeah, the point.
What's that?
I think there was a lack of communication of processes that were in print. Because some of us knew what should have been happening, it was just a. Trying to get it done.
But also remember what else happened just literally a week to ten days before that particular event. We were thrown, we lost our interim.
Yeah.
And so not only did we lose check signers. Okay, but we lost internal direction. Right? The people that are supposed to be here to give us the way we're supposed to. Some of us know what we're supposed to do, but some of us also know that crap, I can't say anything about it.
Yeah.
Well, and, and even just the second that that decision was made. An email or something should have been triggered to go to staff, to director-level folks in the city saying. This is how to function going forward and to not have that for, I think it was a solid two weeks. Anyway, so it was just something that I wanted to acknowledge that. I didn't really meaningfully think about it, I think, until like you and I were talking during this process.
I appreciate that, Counselor, and Counselor Prince, did you want to chime in something? And then we'll, you all have foreshadowed.
No, I'm ready to move on.
Yeah, you, you all have foreshadowed several of our recommendations very nicely, so thank you for that. I think you're, you're seeing ahead, did you?
That was the whole point of this plan, was so we could move forward, yeah.
And publicly.
And start to get there, right? Yeah, and, and you know, the difficulty with this process, of course, is you, you have to look at the top stuff before you can get to the recommendations. And we're, we're looking at the top stuff right now, right? Just so we, we're well-grounded in it before we get to the recommendations. So, um, City Council Cohesion is next, thank you. So what happened during this time, we've already talked about, Counsel, you're struggling with your role clarity, especially around HR issues. Not surprising, given the administrative leadership vacuum, um, but we just again, have to. Put a pin in that, that, that role clarity, especially around HR, um, happened. Um, you were struggling with the lack of trust in your administrative leadership expertise. And I will note, there were, there were points I heard where you were even hearing some conflicting advice. Uh, which is not at all unusual, that different people with different expertise will give you advice at sea. But it puts you all in a really tough position to figure out how to navigate forward. And so, um, so part of that is just around how, uh, rebuilding the trust in your administrative leadership expertise. Um, and then again, the, the lack of clear performances when there were, uh, questions about city leadership performance. Um, I'm going to step into this next one around informal connections. Um, and you'll see here, I've got inference, they're sometimes called good old boy networks. One of the things I'll, I'll say just about informal connections in general. It's not at all unusual to lean on your informal community networks as a source of strength. I think that it can really be a source of strength. In the public sector, it can also get. Messy when you, when there are formal processes in place. And so to balance that, when is it a source of strength, and when do you really need to lean on those formal processes? I think is a point of learning here. Um, you all had the clear overlay of, um. What I, the term I heard in several interviews was the good old boys network and the gender overlay. And the kind of underlying gender bias that came out as, as a part of that. And there's healing that needs to happen from that, learning and healing that needs to happen from that. So I'm, I'm just spotlighting that as something that happened and that we make sure that that's part of the mix. That recognition, both of the kind of use of informal networks, how to use it as a strength. But recognize formal networks and the issue around not inadvertently excluding, um, some folks. Um, there was also some current concerns raised about whether every council member was getting the same information in a timely way. And again, this is not an unusual, uh, practice, um, to be concerned about. It's one of the things with, um, strong city manager role that you all will work through. Um, to make sure that you all are getting the same information in a timely way. And it's, it's part of having a good partnership, um, between council and, and city manager. So the effects were that, that you all had a tough time, uh, working through some disagreements constructively. And working together as one, um, decision-making body rather than individual counselors. Um, there was some lost trust from community members and staff and council's leadership at points. Um, there was also recognition by you all of the, uh, depth of the problem. And the need to improve both council and organizational performance leading to this. And there's going to be a need to heal some of those divisions that result, that, that resulted from that lost trust. That occurred just because of the difficulty of the leadership over time. So, um, that is city council cohesion, and next up is executive team cohesion there.
Right, on to the next cohesion, uh, mining. So just like, uh, we talked about, uh, with regard to the committed, uh. To the staff commitment in the earlier one. The executive team found, uh, was keeping the operations moving. Um, during this, this period of, uh, uh, change and transition and, and challenge. And, um, so they were doing that in the face of, uh, having a lot of, uh, constraints in terms of. Uh, they've had administrate, administrative leadership changes. Um, and unclear decision-making processes or, uh, leadership support was their experience. And so, um. The effect of that was that there was an increased tension among the executive, uh, team leadership. Is because they were trying to navigate, uh, unclear decision-making paths, and that's. Uh, it's hard enough when you already have the paths in front of you and you've got tough decisions, it's even harder. When it's, the path is not clear for making a tough decision. Um, and as part of that, uh. There, there was, uh, you know, uh. Not an understanding, uh, or a clear understanding of how council and staff interacted. And so in terms of decision-making paths, uh, having that clarification, uh, not having that clarification. Uh, of how council and staff interact, uh, was a challenge. Um, but also, um, they experienced that they, they are trying to meet the need. Balance the needs of the city as a whole, but also meet the needs of their own departments. And as such, um, you had departments that were competing against each other, and you had that tension. Happening in the midst, in the midst of all of this, uh, as well. Now, that's something I will say is natural within, within cities and departments, that you do have that tension. That's, that's, uh, just normal business, if you will. Um, because there are always limited resources and, and limited abilities, um, to serve all departments. But the thing that makes this a little bit different is that without the, um, the administrative. Uh, role being effectively implemented. Um, to be able to, to be sort of the orchestra leader and navigate. Those tensions between the departments and help them move forward with that, they were left sort of rudderless on that. And so that, that's what exacerbated that, that tension going forward. So, uh, yeah.
Good. And next, um, this is the last one, you are anticipating. Um, is around community communication engagement and trust. And we wanted to wrap up with this one, uh, because I know this was a priority for you all as well as council. We heard that clearly in the scoping of this was to figure out how to do an internal organizational assessment that also, um, included this community side, so. Um, you all know this, um, the community received most of its information about what was happening. Um, via informal networks and social media. You all were appropriately advised that you couldn't talk about this because it was an HR issue. And it meant that, um, the community received very little formal information from you all. When I asked what they did receive, I heard, I heard two kind of formal mechanisms. One was the city council meetings, and two was the letter that went out to the volunteer firefighters. Um, about putting them on administrative leave. So the fact that those were kind of the two formal decision points is interesting. So what that meant was that community members, again, naturally, so much of this is natural, but a good learning. They, um, filled that vacuum with perceptions that might not have been accurate and that tend to skew negative. Right? So that's what happens in a vacuum, and especially on social media, things tend to skew negative, right? Um, so in the face of that escalating community criticism. It affected both you all as council and it affected staff, um, in terms of staff morale. And so there's, again, we're going to use the term healing a lot, but, um, there was difficulty because of that. And you'll see in some of our recommendations, some things around communication that you'll probably want to do differently moving forward because of that. So we're going to pause, and I know you all have kind of been giving us feedback as we've gone along. Um, so Mayor, I'll look for your help in how, how much time you want to spend on this, but, but we were kind of curious. Overall, what resonated and what particularly stood out from you out of these seven observations? Seven topic areas for observations, is there anything? Seven topic areas for observations. Is there anything in particular that you want to make note of that really resonated?
I had a thought from this last part that we're just talking about about the community trust and how things were communicated. One of the things that I think I I observed both as outside of council. Since I just came on in January. Is I think that one of the challenges that really eroded some of the public trust is, I feel like they got a lot of mixed messages from us on the informal communications. Or some of the things that were said in community meetings where it was, this process is only going to take so long. And so there were sort of vague expectations set for how long leaves would last.
But that did not come from council.
On the basis did, because I said that to the volunteer firefighters. Because that's what I was told by the investigation folks. And then I was told they would have it done by a date. So I added two weeks to that date when I said it to them. And as we all know, this stuff went one heck of a lot longer than anybody thought it would.
And then I think there was also some some backtracking that we had to do as council a little bit. Because I think we had an expectation as a council that more elements of the investigations that were being conducted would be made public. Or that it was being treated as public or that we as council would have access to more of the information than we had and some of those other things. So there was a lot of, I think, inconsistencies in terms of. I think that there was an expectation. I know I personally, as a member of the community at the beginning of this process. As a counselor at the end of this process, I think there was a certain expectation that can't talk about it now, but we'll be able to talk about it. Or when the investigations are complete, but then it was, no, we can't. Yeah, we've been advised that we can't. And so I think there was a lot of that kind of stuff that really definitely affected. And so again, getting systems in place, having the trains in place, having a lot of those things. And I I know that's stuff that's going to come up in your recommendations, but one of the things that really resonates is that I don't know that. When I think about everything, I feel like consistency is probably the thing that was lacking. Kind of throughout and inconsistencies are what. Most erode trust.
Part of it is because we didn't have any HR. I mean, to be blunt, to tell us that at the end of all this, you still won't be able to say anything. To tell us to. HR is not a lawyer. They know a little bit, got to remember.
I knew it.
When you have in-house counsel, and this is why I've been very impressed with Miller Nash. When you have in-house counsel, and I've had both in this role. Their depth of knowledge of everything, unless they have a specialty, really isn't. They're trying to cover everything that a city needs to know, which for some of us, we watched HR manuals. Go from about 10 pages to what seems to be 500 pages. And without the dedicated person to know all those things. We did not get all of the information we probably should have had, but I don't hold. I do not hold one person accountable for this. Because this, as I call it, their kerfuffle, okay? Had so many things dovetailing together to create the perfect storm. That no matter how much we would have wished we could go back and change one thing, that one thing would not have fixed this. Okay, and that's why we have to have this report. That's why we have to have the the help going forward. Because I'll be right up front. I don't want anybody to ever be sitting in this chair or any of your chairs and have to go through. All the things we went through in that eight months, okay? One or two things, yes, but not a freaking firestorm of imminent proportions. Let's just leave it at that.
I was going to say that I think that part of it comes down to the role clarity once again. Because I think some bounds were. Intent intentions were good. But I think that things were said that should not have been said because they were promises made that should not have been promised. Even though the intentions were good. There was no way that we could release that information because it was confidential. And if we release the information, we lose all rights of privacy and confidentiality on those documents. You cannot release an investigative document to public. Otherwise, it's public. They know all the dirt, everything that was found.
But here's part of the issue. You're absolutely right. But if you look at what goes on in public life around this country, no one thinks that way. Because apparently, once you, once you say it can't be leaked, it does get leaked somehow, somewhere, some way. But you understand what I'm saying? But that's why we have that negative. You know, stuff happening with social media and whatnot is because. While we may hold to the line of what it's supposed to be and we keep everything under wraps. What people see is that, oh, they're just saying it because we watched them do it over here and we watched them do it over there.
But this was a closed table investigation.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
And it shouldn't have been promised to the public that they would learn the results. No, I agree. And it wasn't intended poorly or. You know.
I understand.
It was a misstep. It was role clarification. We said that we would share our decision. That decision did not come quickly enough for them and things got worse. I will say one thing, and Jackie, I don't want to cut you off for you.
Oh, no, I'm done.
I will, I want to say one thing about the communication with the public. Before this lovely kerfuffle. I used to answer questions on social media. If they had a question, the city councilor, I would hop on there and I would answer it. And I would answer it factually. After being told that they would watch my house burn down, after being told that I was a piece of crap. After being told they hoped I'd die, after being called a liar multiple times. I won't answer on social media anymore. Not my problem. If they don't want to come to city council meetings, if they don't want to email us appropriately, if they don't want to act like a decent human being. I'm not going to go out of my way anymore. And they can just choose not to vote for me again because they have abused this council beyond any course of reason. I was told by a city manager individual. An interim city manager that I shouldn't be upset about any of that. I shouldn't have been upset when I had a firefighter tell me they would watch my house burn down. But I'm just supposed to bend over like everybody else on here, take it up the heiny. And be the public servant and tell them what they want to hear. We can't. A lot of this isn't that we weren't trying to share information. It's that they didn't believe us and they called us liars. Even when the facts were in their face, we were called liars. So I granted a lot of that prob guaranteed stemmed from the mistrust that went along the way. But there are two parts for this and not all of that fault lays with the city council. And I'm just going to leave that there.
I think that's the the learning that I hope everybody takes away from this is that we all get to own our piece. And there's there's multiple pieces to this kerfuffle, right? And and the challenge, of course, is how do we fix the system as a whole? And make sure that all the pieces are working together well. We've talked some about the role clarity. We've talked some about the leadership vacuum. And you'll see in our recommendations, again, I'm foreshadowing a little bit. But but the strength of the working relationship between you and Rich is going to be key. And and that will be key to helping to heal staff morale, your relationship with the community, you know, it all. And you'll have positive ripple effects from that, but you just got to, you got to get there first. And I know you're doing that work. You're doing that work. Are there other, I think?
Just one other general comment, since we're still talking a little bit about kind of the findings and how we got to where we are before we go into recommendations. Another thing that just kind of occurred to me. Is a little bit piggybacking up on something Tracy had mentioned about kind of, there was that expectation of, Roddy even said that. The process wouldn't take as long as it did. That expectation or Tracy, as you said, that kind of hope that we weren't going to have to terminate anybody. And so a lot of things were driven by the hope that that was not something we were going to come to. But I think that also led, in my own estimation, I wasn't here for these decisions. But I feel like it also led to a couple of decisions. That amplified certain conflicts of interest, that also affected trust and processes and how things happen. So, you know, to give. Who was selected to be the interim city manager following the city manager being placed on leave? That's a concerning, a potential concerning conflict of interest that may have created some other problems. And I think there are some others. I don't want to kind of beat any dead horses here. But it's one of those things where I think that, again, not focusing on the process, I mean, more focusing on the kind of hope that we're just going to get through this. Maybe kept us from exercising caution and maybe really evaluating. You know, if the worst case scenario happens, how should we proceed, you know?
I think so often the learning, and we know this from emergency response too, right? Planning is so much of what helps because if you if you are in the crisis in the moment. That is the most difficult time sometimes to try to figure out how to navigate. And and so you'll see this, and again, precursor to the recommendations that we'll be walking into next. That so much of this is about what are the planning pieces you need to put in place so that you're not faced with some of those difficult situations? And Council Burns, did you have your view on that?
It didn't appear that we worked together as a team. And no matter what we're facing, how bad it gets, if we don't pull together as a team, we got nothing. And that, I think, for me is. One of my biggest complaints, if you will, that we don't speak to each other with kindness in our tones. That we don't say the words to others how we would want them said to us. And and so, and that has festered out into our community. And and so I I really hope that if nothing else comes out of this. But this, that we can pull together as a team because we need each other. We really do. That's all I have to say about that.
That's a nice note.
I think we're ready to move.
There you go. Move on to recommendations. Thank you for that that segue. Yeah, so the next step is is recommendations. We're going to look at recommendations to tiers. We've got those that are more crucial in the short term, that are directly related to this kerfuffle that happened. But there are other things that emerged as part of this assessment process that we didn't want to lose. And so we've captured those as well. They're less immediate, but they're probably important for your long-term success as well. So just know we captured those as we went along, so we, so you didn't lose them. So first one is, again, going back to our seven topics again. We're going to start with complaint processes and difficult HR situations. And again, Eric and I will switch these off as we go. I'm going to try to move through these pretty quickly because we're going to have a chance, you all are going to have a chance to dive into these more deeply as next steps. So this is really just a chance for quick overview. And and so if I don't spend a whole lot of time, if we don't spend a whole lot of time on any single one, just know that's why. Because we're going to be, we're going to be moving through this. So you won't be surprised to see to see some of these under the complaint processes and difficult HR situations. You need a policy, you need training associated with it so that people know how to use the policy well. Dedicated HR professional, we've talked about that already. You need to update your city personnel handbook and HR policies. We know that's in process already. Training for you all on your HR role and processes and and to have that pretty regularly reinforced. That training over time, and this is just helpful for you all, you're part-time city counselors, right? To get that support and and Rich, a city attorney, can help with that. Do you want to bolster the council staff working relationship and staff morale?
I don't know, I'm not working with Jackie anymore. She wants me to talk nice to her.
Well, another nice segue to the next one, which is to really do regular training. To try to build a more positive organizational culture, right? And you all as council lead that. You lead what's going to happen organizationally. So around teamwork and belonging, around navigating interpersonal workplace conflicts and around building that positive organizational culture. Training for both you and for staff. The tier two and both of these kind of fall more into Rich's realm. Providing an outlet so that staff can express concerns and suggestions in a safe atmosphere. And a basic staff training curriculum, this came up out of, and again, both of those are, are which is.
Rich's bailiwick. Next, to you, Eric.
So back to role clarity. The first item in the tier one category, if you will, is to provide regular leadership training on roles. And the and the lanes for city councils, city manager and department directors. We've talked a lot about about the need for establishing roles and responsibilities clearly. That comes into that. The second is updating regularly and review your council's, your council's rules of procedure. That falls also into the roles and responsibilities as you have those in front of you. They will will help in terms of guiding that. Strengthen the council's support of staff. So what we mean by that is. Being able to support staff publicly in the work that they do. And if there are issues that have to be addressed that are, that are more. Concerns or negative, that that happens in private.
Yes.
And pass for Rich. Yes, exactly, counselor.
We get to brag.
Yeah, so. But we talked a lot about morale and being able to show that support is helpful in that regard and strengthening their role as as staff. And then strengthening the administrative leadership support of staff. Allowing Rich to help build that relationship with the staff. And help him to support the staff and to be to be the best that they can be. Tier two, create basic training curriculum for council staff. Now, where does that differ from tier one A? We're talking about things that are are routine in organizations, city organizations. Basic trainings such as cultural sensitivity, conflicts of interest. IT, the operational type, work environment type things. So, and I, there was a quote that I think is relevant here. The person said, it's up to both staff and council to get those roles defined and to know where the line is. So it it takes a team to be able to do this.
Okay, next one is number three, administrative leadership vacuum. We only have tier one recommendations for you here. You really need to make sure that Rich has a good, strong onboarding process. We've already talked with Rich about this and I know he's being very proactive about it as well. But make sure that that you give him good entry and set him up for a foundation for success. We've already talked about providing clear process to fill leadership vacancies. Again, both kind of short-term periodic plan for vacations and sicknesses, but also longer term. And the plans may be different for those two. The skill set you need for one week vacation, different than than for a couple of months. And that's a continuity of operations plan, which is letter D as well. And I want to say it's not just for the city manager, but also your city attorney. You talked about what happened when you had a vacation at a critical time for your city attorney. And I know you're working to address that, but also your key leadership staff and that'll fall on Rich's, on Rich's shoulders. And then again, ensure staff communication is a priority through this. So, and next will be Eric.
Continuity of committed staff. So we have one in in tier one, and that's the focus on team building professional development opportunities and staff morale. And I'd like just to elaborate a little bit further on this one. So you have, as we found, you have staff morale that has has been taxed, if you will. And so really putting a significant effort into doing that kind of team building. and professional development, rebuilding that morale is, is important. But one thing I'd like to add um, is that in, one of the things that we found in our work uh, is that types have changed with regard to the workplace. And it is no longer just about the paycheck. It's also about the work environment. And that's what employees these days are, are, are looking for. They're looking for a place where they feel valued. They're looking for a place uh, where they feel comfortable that, that they can uh, work uh, with their team members. Um, and that's going to affect your ability to retain people. And it's also going to affect your ability to recruit people. If they find this is an attractive place to work, um, that's going to enhance uh, your competitiveness as an employer, um, both in retention and in recruitment. Uh, tier two, uh, enhancing staff capacity uh, to support core uh, city uh, services and functions. This is something you talked about earlier tonight. Um, with regard to vacancies and uh, what happens uh, when somebody's gone or on leave or uh, and so being able to create some staff resilience so that uh, you have the ability to pivot when that happens. And so being able to, to uh, look at your job descriptions, uh, ensure that staff have backups uh, for the functions that you do, cross-training uh, to allow that to happen. That's what falls under this. And then C, consider frequent, like frequency and structure of council meetings. Um, what we're talking about here is, um, you folks talk a lot about very important policy issues, sometimes very complex policy issues, and staff uh, are the people that help you to get the information you need to support you forward. So enabling the staff to help you the best that they can uh, in terms of thinking about the frequency of your meetings and thinking about the structure of your meetings so that staff can be their best in helping you uh, to make good policy.
Um, can you expand on that a little bit? If I still not?
Yeah.
So are you saying we shouldn't have meetings as well again?
So that's one, that's one possibility, but I don't know that that's necessarily the answer. Um, it may just be restructuring the way you do it. Um, this came up originally out, the reason it's under um, this particular category around continuity committed staff was because there's a recognition that um, of the amount of staff support that's needed for a council meeting. And let's just look and make sure that your council meetings are happening in a way that are most effective for you and that are most effective for staff to allow them to get their work done. So that's the reason it came up, it, it came up in the assessment in terms of support for staff.
We're very.
Does that help?
Well, it does, but I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. They just uh,
Trying to restructure it, and I think this will fall firmly on Rich's lap again to kind of serve um, as the linchpin between you and staff, that you figure out a win-win.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I, I'm just um, trying to figure, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we are gonna fit what is normally three completely full council meetings into less.
Right.
And is that gonna make it easier on staff if we try to do that or not? I mean, there's a lot of considerations. I guess we're gonna have to do some more work.
Yeah.
There are some tweaks I think we could do to the system to take, for lack of a better word, the burden of having to be here off staff. Uh, I think there are some ways we can do that so that staff doesn't feel like they have to be here at the same three meetings we do. Um, because I, I'll be blunt. I think they would like to have their time too.
Actually, I don't know if I agree with that. They were given the opportunity to not do it, and then they all showed up at the very next meeting.
I'm just, I'm just.
So, um, so I don't know, but, but we'll see. That's, let, let's not hash out, I, I, okay, I'm, I'm not sure.
And for what it's worth.
We did have a good.
Oh, tension point here, right? Just note that there's good conversation happening about this already. Opportunity, right? So lean into this as, as a point where there's just more conversations that needs to have.
Yeah, and I just want to observe that um, you know, city manager Klein um, had very quickly, I think shifted us and we had some conversations. Tracy, I apologize, I think that you were.
Oh, no, I'm scared. I have reacted.
I think you were not present for the first one, and then the second one, you had objected to it when it was kind of presenting it to us. I remember, but um, I think that we had we had seen that city manager Klein had encouraged us to, to kind of consider the staff's time, their resources, and that he was going to ask them only to come if they were going to be presenting something or if there was something essential. We would getting, be getting more reports. And then I think that what we had kind of heard was that staff was appreciative of that, that they, that they liked, that they weren't expected to be here, and more things were being funneled through the city manager position. Um, except for the more essential things. Um, but then I, this is the second half of my observation. By the end of city manager Klein's tenure, we had a whole bunch of nameplates, temporary nameplates put up, and suddenly we were kind of seeing them come here again, even if it was once a month or whatever it was.
That happened after that, that meeting, that meeting that I complained about. I said, well, I like seeing them. We like being able to engage with them and talk to them. And then I noticed the very next meeting, even though they were told they didn't have to show up, they were all there. And then um, he's kind of looking around a little bit, and then the next meeting after that, they all had signs and they all had a place to sit, and it was like, okay, fine, you guys are gonna show up here, you are. I think is maybe what happened. I don't know, but um, so there had been some discussion over that.
Okay, yeah, no, it's good.
But I, but I think something that I really value and why I very much appreciate hearing this again is, I often have kind of noticed, and this is not just with city staff, I also think about how we communicate what the purpose of a city council meeting is when we're talking about the community too, right? A city council meeting by nature is a meeting between city council facilitated by a couple of key city staff. It is for us to meet with each other. Not for us to meet with city staff, not for us to meet with the public, not to any of that stuff. Those are things that we add to the meeting because we believe as a city council that that is a benefit to us in our decision-making. But I think that what is often misconstrued publicly is that the purpose of this meeting is for the community to interact with us or for city staff to have a channel to us or whatever it is. And so I'm just saying that I think as just the purpose of a sort of hitting a reset button to some extent, I just wanted to at least acknowledge that by its definition, the only thing that's really essential is the people at this day is for the sake of what a city council meeting is supposed to be. And so, to some extent, when we start creating expectations of our staff and so forth, we start kind of losing sight of what the actual intention of the speaking is. I just kind of wanted to say.
I love it, because what you're starting to dive into is what could be a good conversation on all of you all about role and purpose of state counseling, sorry, which leads right back to some of the other recommendations I'm making, so. Um, so I, we're starting a really good conversation that I hope you find an opportunity to continue down the road. So, we're gonna keep rolling, is that? Eric, did you finish off?
I did.
Yeah, okay. So um, number five then is city council cohesion. And so tier one here is around um, leaning on your professional staff and subject matter experts with dealing with uh, difficult, complicated situations. You did that in particular, I heard. Um, lead, how you leaned on CIS, um, and, and you are starting to build up even more your cadre of um, key experts for you to lean on. But when you're, and when you're in a difficult situation, you do want to make sure that you're in a place where you can lean on the expertise of your city manager, your city attorney, CIS, um, to lead you well. And I did hear in the interviews um, some good things there, but also some confusion in terms of uh, making sure that you're, you're leaning on them well. And then we've already talked about um, providing training to support you all in your role and in team building in general. Um, to the earlier point, tier two that came up, and again, not as immediate, um, but to uh, convene regularly some planning sessions or retreats to help you focus on roles, goals, strategic direction, team building. Again, longer term, as you come out of a crisis to, you've been so focused in coping with the here and now and making it through that it would be great, it'd be a sign of progress and success when you're able to start looking ahead again. So uh, that was the last one on tier two. I'm gonna back over to Eric.
Okay, uh, executive team cohesion, um, there's two, a tier two, tier one uh, recommendations here. One is uh, to support uh, team and trust building with the new city manager and, and the executive team. Um, as uh, Rich continues to, to build his um, his team and, and uh, the, the structure, being able to enable uh, that team to come together and enable that team to, to work uh, effectively and support that. Uh, the second is to set uh, clear expectations for city council and staff interactions. We talked a little bit about that earlier. Um, the key will be to uh, figure out what that is, work with Rich uh, on that. And once you decide what that is, stick with it and, and be consistent.
We're in the home stretch, y'all. Getting there. Number seven on recommendations, community communication, engagement and trust. Um, and um, I'm gonna do a quick quote here. Someone needs to take the lead in the city to communicate to the public. That was just one of the quotes I got um, out of one of the interviews. Um, you clearly need to bring additional communication expertise into the organization. You all, I think pretty universally are identifying that need. Um, and you need to be able to access crisis communication when you're in the moment. Um, that's not always easy to do, especially when you're resource constrained. So I know that's something that you're gonna have to figure out over time. Um, in the short term though, figuring out how to get that expertise and also identifying somebody to speak on behalf of the city, both internally and externally, especially if you have leadership turnover, you need to figure out who the, who the next person is in line. The tier two, and again, because of resource constraints, um, consider creating a dedicated um, P I, a public information officer um, position when that's something that you feel able to do. And to develop crisis communication protocols. You know, you all were in a tough place around confidentiality requirements. There are mechanisms uh, and methods for you to be able to craft a message that um, also preserves confidentiality. And that's a really tough thing to do that organizations, much larger than yours, struggle with every day. Um, but to be able to um, figure that out for future, it will serve you. Again, that's one of the planning pieces. Um, so that you have both the transparency met um, with uh, with also filling, uh, fulfilling your confidentiality requirements, and make sure you fill information gaps early. And that actually should probably be a tier one, that you make sure and fill your information gaps early, no matter what's happening. So, conclusion then. Um, and we're gonna leave you with a couple of things and one more for us. Um, first, I want to remind you of something where we started, and I'm gonna quote um, a Dr., Dr. W. Edwards Deming. Some of you probably know the um, name Deming. He's a noted management consultant. He famously said that ninety-four percent of most problems and possibilities for improvement belong to the system, not the individual. And that's exactly what you all have structured this after action review on. The idea that there are systems fixes that are gonna take you further than just focusing on individual fixes. Um, so we want to leave you with three overarching themes. And I think you all have heard it again and again through our presentation, so hopefully this is just one more reminder. The big things that we, we're hoping you walk away with. Number one, uh, roles and responsibilities for city council, city manager, city attorney and department heads all need to be clarified, consistently reinforced and integrated into all your systems. Roles and responsibilities, clarity. Number two, staff morale and support. Gotta, gotta be a major focus of the organization as it comes out of the script. And number three, council and staff acting as one team. I really like how much you all talked about you all acting as a team. You and staff actually need to act as one team as well. And that doesn't mean that you can't, you as council can't have differences of opinion. You absolutely can. And how do you do that constructively, in a healthy way, that still allows you to come out of it as one team together with Rich and staff? Um, because it's when you have that team together, that you're really gonna start firing all pistons. That's, so we, we leave you with that, and Eric, anything else you wanna close up with before, oh, we have next steps?
Yeah, next steps.
Um, so let me pause. Is there anything before, anything else you all want to talk about in terms of what resonated before we get to next steps? Been here for a little bit now. Go, okay, next steps. So um, obviously, we're gonna distribute the final report. And we're gonna leave that with, with Rich tonight to, to get to you. When we were scoping this project with you in the beginning, there were two pieces that we left open. One was community rollout, and the other was developing an action plan. And we deliberately left that open, you may remember, because we wanted to make sure you had Rich on board to walk that with us. And you wanted to see what the results of this were. So we had those two pieces. So, so one of the questions for you, not necessarily for tonight, what do you want to do about the community rollout? We talked about, um, we could do kind of just the low-key, release the executive summary. Um, those kinds of things, or you could do a more extensive kind of town hall, um, which is what we talked about originally. Um, uh, so that's under community rollout. Under the implementation plan, um, the, and this will really fall to, to Rich to work with you on how you want to take this to the next step. About actually turning this into something actionable. And you don't want to just leave this as a report on the shelf. You need to turn it into something that you will actually implement. Um, and that, and it's a, it's a really key time with Rich coming in as your new city manager, that you all partner with that on that action. And so that's, that's next steps um, that we have, and it's just kind of a reminder of where we were when we began this and what we kind of left open to decide. Eric, anything else? Before we close out?
Um, just to kind of close things out.
Or unless uh, mayor and council, is there anything else related to next steps you all want to talk about right now?
Um, the only thing I went to say is that in regards to community rollout, I believe this needs to be a discussion item at our next regular meeting. Um, because we should have the report by then. We need to, we need to have an open discussion about how do we want to do this, and what are the best ways for us to do this? And I will be honest, staff, send your recommendations through Rich, please. Okay, so that we know where you want to be. Uh, yes, Andrew, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Um, I was just going to request that we treat this somewhat as a public hearing as opposed to just discussion items, since we typically direct that um, public comment be only on matters that are not on the agenda. So if this is going to be an agenda item.
And if we have people in the audience that want to discuss it, then I'd always ask for that.
Yeah.
But what about a community town hall after?
That's part of what, that's part of what I'm getting at, is that we need to discuss how do we want to do a community town halls. So then figure out whether we want to do that, or we want to just put an executive summary up. How do we do that? In other words, so that we come at this with one cohesive, we're unified, this is gonna be our response.
So, so then in our, in our next meeting, discuss it and then set a date for a.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we are all, as you said, being one team. And not each of us going off in seven different directions with this.
It works.
So we all discuss it, we'll all have the report to be able to read through it, figure out what we individually think, and then come to cohesive, unified response to give to the community.
And bringing you back when you haven't been listening to us for an hour and a half and tired.
I would read the whole thing before, you know, so. Any other comments from the council?
Money well spent.
Definitely.
I have one other question. I apologize, this is a bit amorphous, but um, one of the things that occurs to me is, we didn't lack for written policy through all of this, right? We've had human resources, we've had a personnel handbook, we've had um, a charter, we've had city council rules, a lot of roles, a lot of expectations, a lot of how should processes be followed, existed. Um, but we are a small town. We are a small government, which means that an individual person with enough authority acting outside of those policies can have a dramatic effect on all of the things that we're looking at now, right? That it could just be a single to use the technical term, even though, the somewhat technical term, even though it sounds worse than it is, a bad actor, right? Somebody was doing something that is more out of their self-interest, or maybe out of a disregard for policies or typical procedures, how much that individual ignoring or being unaware. Ignoring or being unaware or whatever of policies. How much of a negative impact they could have on the functioning of government? I'm just curious if you have any um. Thoughts, suggestions, um guidance for us that you could offer from this whole process of looking at a small government like this. Where a single person with enough authority acting outside of the hundreds of pages of policies that we might be setting ourselves to be drafting. Do you have any ideas for how we can safeguard ourselves in the in that? In that sort of um concern that a single individual, because of how small our government does typically wield enough power to cause a curveball?
I have, I have some thoughts for you, and you probably do as well.
Go ahead.
Um, um, so one, it kind of goes back to this question about are your systems and processes strong and sound? Because if your system is working well, it will have checks and balances on some of the individual pieces when. And and you know, I think more often it's not deliberate, right? It's, and again, we go back to the same inadvertent, you know, it's more often that when performance goes astray. It's not an intentional thing, but somebody needs a course correction, right? And if your systems are working well, those course corrections will be in place and will help. And, you know, almost all of the time, that's what you're dealing with, and so if your system gets hurt. It'll it'll protect you against that. Checks and balances. What else would you add to that?
Uh, well, first of all, I would just concur with what you just said. Um, um. Uh, if the system is working well, it those checks and balances um should be there. Um, the application of the uh rules and procedures and and systems that you've put in place need to be consistent. And consistently applied. Um, once you start deviating from that, then then you then you get into more more trouble, if you will. But if you have the one, as you say, counselor, the one bad actor who comes out. Um, if it's one bad actor, uh, but the but the policies are are there and they're consistently uh in place. And you know who has uh the uh the authority or the decision-making authority to be able to navigate that? That's gonna be key.
And I I think really quick, the one thing I would add, you know, Councilmember Keating, you you said a minute ago, we had policies, you know, and and. Um, uh, using the employee handbook as an example, that was one of the recommendations that came up in this presentation. Um, as uh Shawna has shared with me, we have an employee handbook. It was last updated in twenty ten. Right? And so that's one of the things is is having a policy is is great, but having it be a living document that is not only. Utilized when it when a need for it comes up, but it's also something that. You know, I I know that Mary, you mentioned earlier, you know, you've you've seen him go from this to this. And that's not always the most beneficial thing, but as new items come up, as new circumstances arise, oh, we haven't faced that before. Updating that document so that um it's not only remembered when it's needed, but hopefully has something in it. That applies to the circumstances that came up. And so I don't think that this was what you were saying, but I I think it's important to. Have as part of the discussion that it's not enough to just have a policy, but to have it be utilized and updated and. Um, because as we talk about um the the continuity of operations, the continuity of of procedure. When we do have a, when we do have a vacancy and the next person comes in, whatever role we just filled. To be able to say, here's how we do things, um, here's our our policies, our procedures. Um, you know, if you have any recommendations, great. If you have any questions, you know, um. So that that's something, it's not an, it's not enough to just have it, you know, gather dust on the shelf, right?
Yeah.
It needs to be a living document almost.
Yeah, it has to. It has to be regularly reviewed. It has to be regularly updated.
It has to be regularly taught.
Well, you see, the card missed, we haven't been feeding it. We haven't even let it out to go to the bathroom.
Nothing, we've done nothing with it, but just.
treated it like a Tamagotchi, yeah.
But and it's also important to make sure that it's not just. Being updated, but it is also being utilized, right? And that it is, and and that it is. And it is a part of the action. So think about the complaint process, right? You know, you have employee makes a complaint. The person they make the complaint to may well say, hey, I feel like I can nip this in the bud real quick. Let me go talk to the person that this person has complained against, just as an example. Um, not let me consult the handbook for how I should handle this, right? That the first instinct is X versus Y, and that's that inadvertent, you know, trying to take care of this. I think I got the thing. I think I can figure this out. Um, but just kind of making sure that that first step. Is always go to the policies, go to the policies. And if those policies start to create checks where it says, don't do it alone. Put something in writing, get something to HR, get something to so and so, do whatever it is, create these steps. That now make it so that it's not just an individual or it's not just, you know, that person who is inadvertently creating more challenges, but.
I I think Councillors Keating and and Kaufman, you you what you're both saying really supports each other. It needs to be taught because regularly teaching it is what leads to the instinct of, hey, this situation has come up. I'm gonna go consult the the policy because, you know, by by reinforcing that, that's what builds that that habit. And I a lot of times what I've experienced in the the different organizations, the different teams that I've been a part of. When somebody does have that instinct, a vast majority of the time, the instinct that they have is the correct one. But the the first, the most important step is still to go talk to the, look at that policy, talk to the person who oversees that policy. And confirm that that's the right thing, because when it, on the time that it's not, when that when that instinct is not correct, you don't wanna, you don't wanna find out afterward.
Yeah, and to to even go back to my example, that policy, leaning on that policy is something that protects everybody that's involved, right? So let's say that manager who receives the complaint goes to another manager and says, hey, I think I can nip this in the bud. I've got this complaint. Let's talk about it. That other manager who is also trained now creates a check to say, hey, do you know what? I know that I'm protected if we do this by the proper pro- policy, right? So now everybody involved so that if that one person thinks, hey, inadvertent, that inadvertent. You know, situation of saying, hey, I think I can solve this real quick. That person who they're going to is going to have the knowledge because they will been trained consistently, because those policies will spell a lot of this stuff out. To know, I'm not going to engage in this off-policy process. I'm gonna make you go by the policy because it protects me too.
Yeah.
Any other comments, counsel? I'm coming to you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Because now we'll move into the last part of our normal meeting.
Thank you all for the time tonight.
Thank you. Really honestly, guys, thank you so much for all of this work. I know we're paying you for it, but still, thank you.
It's a pleasure to work.
Thank you. Did you manage your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, because the uh, because the the agenda this evening, as you mentioned in your your preamble, the this was the one item on the agenda. So I'm gonna keep my comments uh focused on the one agenda item this evening. I just wanna take the opportunity uh to highlight and recognize that you all as a as a body took the step. To engage in this process. You know, you recognize you've, the the word kerfuffle has has happened, it has been has been. Used this evening to describe what happened, but you all as the the policymaking body for this city recognized that a a kerfuffle had occurred. Kind of hard not to recognize that, but you also recognize that, hey, we need to take some proactive steps to not only try to ensure that this did. Something like this doesn't happen again, but to help us chart the course for 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 correction. Um, in in these areas. So I I wanna take the opportunity to recognize you all for taking this step. Um, you know, as I was evaluating whether this position was. In interesting to me personally, um, that was one of the things that really stood out to me was that you had recognized that, you know, the the last. Six months to a year has been challenging for the city, but instead of just saying, well, let's just move on. You're you're really recognizing that we need to, we need to know what happened and to try to avoid it in the future. The other thing I I wanna take the opportunity to recognize. Um, that was very much highlighted by C and Eric in their presentation was the city staff. As as I went through the process and again, evaluating whether Toledo was an attractive opportunity to me. What I heard from you all, what I heard from my predecessor, what I heard from the community, the public members. And from the staff members that were a part of my interview process was, we have a great staff. We have a great team. Some of them have been overextended, uh, you know, and uh, but. We we have a a just just a little, but that we have a great team, and that if we're able to work together. Um, to to chart that that course correction, that uh we'll be able to retain that great team. To to uh enhance it in the areas where we have vacancies at the moment, but to really continue to provide great public service. With the great team that we have. And so uh I wanna take the the opportunity to recognize the the staff for. All of the the to step, for stepping up as they did, um, and to, you know, be a part of this process. In the, you you all thanked Eric and and Sia this evening for the the great work. Well, the great work comes from the the great outcome. Comes from the people that participated, you know, that you don't, you don't get the kind of report that you got tonight if people aren't willing to be open. To share their experiences and give that that information. So I I wanna tell you that I'm I'm really proud to be here. I'm really proud to be the leader of of this team of staff. To be your facilitation between your function and theirs, and I'm really excited to um, you know, work with you and with them. On these these next steps. So I I really appreciate that, you know, immediately you all started also thinking about what are those next steps? Um, so as a reminder to you from um your, one of your previous meetings. Originally this evening, you were also scheduled to talk about your, the the charter and your policies. And that got moved to your next uh study session to give you all an opportunity to really digest what you heard tonight. So this is definitely the start of the conversation. Uh, so I I thank you all for. Uh, as you prepared to fill the city manager's role with whoever that turned out to be, I thank you all for recognizing that that this was necessary. And uh really, really excited to help lead the the process of incorporating um this feedback into the organization.
I appreciate that you sent that. Yes, we had to fight like mad to get your predecessor to do it. Obviously, you did not need it. Let it go. Let it go. Just go.
Anything else, Rich?
That is the conclusion of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council comments, I'll start with Council Birds.
Thank you. Um. I made a couple of notes. So uh. You guys know that the street dance fundraiser date was changed, even though most of. Everyone is gonna be at the conference. Because of weather, so that that's why the date changed, and I hate like heck that you guys aren't gonna be there. Uh, but I want you to know that it's coming together quite well. And so the vendors, I'm sorry, the donors that I've contacted, we have nine so far and still working on a few more. We have a uh gift certificate coming from Yocuna Bay Charter. Um, we have a hundred dollar gift certificate from Chelsea Rose, so really generous. Yeah, for our raffle drawing. Um, and so uh the. Uh, I have uh three volunteers that I've recruited. Cause you guys can't be there. Uh, and so they're gonna help with the raffle tickets, the homie house, the games. And I'm working with uh Mr. Hebner about how to get the carnival games. Him and are gonna somehow pick them up from the South Beach. Church. And get them here and we'll work out the.
So that's for the, that's for the dance, that's all right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I have a question. Do we have city thank you cards? Is a question.
That is a great question. I will find out and let you know. I I would assume that we do, but I don't wanna.
So technically, Jackie, I think they would be best funding from the homie house rather than the city. Because the city is only assisting. This is the homie house fundraiser. Well.
Thank you.
I I if you think I'm wrong, that's okay.
So the other thing now to move into the pet parade, because I sent.
She could send personal things to the city station air if she wanted to, yeah.
Well, regardless, so the pet parade, further discussion.
So the pet parade, I have three people volunteered to be judges. I need, I need people that will be at the signup table. I I need probably two or three people because I I think we're gonna get hit. Last year, our our attorney had drafted um signup sheets for the pet parade. And it's like some sort of disclaimer, dog bites, it's not our fault.
Liability waiver, yeah.
And and so I I I'm thinking that we probably. I I'm thinking at least two hundred, but maybe more. I don't wanna be short sighted. I think there's gonna be at least two hundred people there. Don't have a crystal ball, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna be huge. And so uh, let's see. There is this stuff I can work out with with uh you directly, Mr. Hebner, and I think that's all that I have to say about that. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Andrew?
I have two things. Uh, one, um, Rich mentioned that in our next work session, we are currently scheduled to do the. City council rules, policies, stuff like that. I would, I cannot be there that night. I would very much like to be in the room for that conversation. I respect if you guys do not wish to move that conversation back a month, but I am. Hoping that you would be willing to bump this to the November work sessions so that I can participate in this discussion. I absolutely cannot be there that night.
So November, we normally don't have a work session because it falls on the day before Thanksgiving.
Um, so uh. Certainly, I can defer this to our next meeting.
Question, question, Omera, when is our next work session scheduled for?
October.
Your next work session is scheduled for October twenty second.
Oh. I can do that.
Okay.
I can do that, never mind. I think when you and I talked about it, we had.
I think we thought it was the twenty nine.
Fifteen.
Oh, the fifteen, yeah.
For some reason.
So that was gonna be the thing that I was gonna mention is October is a month that starts on a Wednesday. Uh, so there's five Wednesdays. So if there was an issue for you with the twenty second, we did have the.
I can twenty seven.
Okay, perfect.
Rehearsal for twelfth night. Um, and the second thing, um, I'm gonna stand up for this because the notes for it are up here. Um, so as I uh mentioned to you guys at our last meeting, um, I. Have been meeting with Justin from I T to uh to work on um a proposal for tech upgrades for city council, for council chambers. Um, we talked about getting tablets for counselors to replace our, you know, very cheap, basic Chromebooks. Um, so we have a little bit more capabilities, better resolution, more versatility with the devices that we are using. Uh, to conduct our businesses, city counselors. Justin has done some pricing on that. Uh, but before I get into that stuff, I wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of the other things that have come up, and we can talk about this more on the fifteenth. But some of this actually should be done by the fifteenth, which is kind of. Um, two things that are really um kind of small and simple that are not so much um for city council to decide, for city council to uh to rule on. One, Justin, by the fifteenth, which is our next scheduled city council meeting, since we've canceled the first. Um, by the fifteenth, Justin is going to have set up a dedicated city council Wi-Fi network for us so that we are not. Um, sharing bandwidth with the public Wi-Fi that we've currently been using, which will open up bandwidth so that we have better Wi-Fi. Connectability, so those of you who do bring your computers and wanna check email, things like that, I know my Chromebook. Has a very difficult time with the public Wi-Fi, and so I can't check my city email. Um, for as long as I'm here on the dais or as long as I'm here in council chambers. Um, so this might improve that a little bit. The upgrades to technology that I'll talk to and talk about in a moment. Would also likely influence that because the quality of the computers we're using. Could be part of the reason why we don't have the same quality connectivity, even if the Wi-Fi is exceptional. So higher quality computers typically mean better bandwidth, better adaptability to. Wi-Fi. So by the fifteenth, we're going to have that dedicated Wi-Fi so that. City counselors have that password-protected Wi-Fi network for us. The other is actually more of a um. In operations, a city handles this rather than city council, and that is that we are going to be replacing the. Um, the projector. As you can see, our projector, it's not just the projector, but it is the mount that it's on. Our projector is held up by two binders, a cassette case and a remote.
I think that was on the instructions. Don't knock that.
Um, so not only are we planning to improve the quality of the projector.
Binders, don't knock the quality.
Binders are great. The binders are spectacular.
As we discovered during the code compliance meeting this afternoon, one of them. As as we discovered during the code compliance meeting this afternoon, one of them is a fire department binder uh with some lovely Microsoft Word art from two thousand and two.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Um, so improving the actual projector itself, but also replacing the mount with something that is adjustable, more versatile um and doesn't require such finagling. Um, so I know visibility is one of the biggest complaints that I've heard from council through this process. The visibility of the projector, the fact that we have, we've had Jensen, for instance, presenting to us while we are all over here and um for those of um those of you who have been in some of our executive sessions where we're getting tables and charts and stuff put up here, and we're all coming down here and sitting around this and kind of having to get really close to it because the way that this is currently set up um is more for public viewing than it is for council uh viewing.
I remember during my my interview, you were all sitting here looking like this because I was over there.
Yep. Tracy, you have.
Didn't we talk about, one of the things you were talking about that we would have with the tablets is we would be able to project whatever's on the screen onto our tablets, so I won't need laser surgery.
That is a possibility, but what we actually, when we met today, we made a slight adjustment to that plan. There was a monitor that was in here.
It's uh behind you, uh behind Councilmember Birds.
That we were messing around with a little bit. Um, one of the things that we are currently exploring as a cheaper, more simplified technical approach to it is to purchase a couple of high resolution monitors that would be with a little bit of carpentry placed here with a couple of arms. Brian, Justin and I had chatted about getting a couple of high resolution monitors that could be low enough that they are not blocking the view for either the audience or for us to be able to see anybody who's out here, but to create something that is a high resolution projection shared with what is on the screen.
Well, it's down there. I'm gonna need a booster seat so I can see it.
I'm just, we would have it on adjustable arms is the idea. So the exact nature of how it will be set up is not yet determined. This was an idea that we just came up with today. In our meetings. Um, but we've we've roughly, we've roughly estimated that it would probably cost between four hundred and fifty and six hundred dollars for some, for a couple of monitors, plus a little bit of carpentry with a couple of adjustable arms so that we could move them so that they're closer, or if a presentation was up that we could pull them up, make them more visible for the folks who are on the dais, but again, solving that problem of our inability to read what is on the screens. As for the other aspect, the tablets, one of the solutions that we are looking at is again, that same kind of screen sharing thing, where if we have our tablets with us, that whatever is being projected on there could be shared. Justin's looking into some options for that, but it does create some technical challenges of how do we send that image to every, to every monitor without necessarily knowing who's bringing monitors, who's not.
Pretty simple. All we do is link on to the, the, I mean, how hard is that?
Could do that too. And with enhanced wifi and stuff like that, that becomes more capable too. So that's another option. The cost of the tablets, um our current solution, trying to save as much money on this process as we can is we wanna look at trusted refurbished uh sources for the devices rather than getting them new. Um, the fact is whoever replaces us on council will be getting them not new either. Uh, but getting them from trusted certified sources, places that regularly sell refurbished uh Microsoft uh Microsoft Surface Pro um tablets. Um, one of the challenges to refurbished is sometimes they come with accessories like the keyboard and um and a case and things like that. Sometimes they don't. Um, assuming um that they all come with no additional accessories, the price for the refurbished we're finding typically between five hundred can get up to seven hundred dollars uh per unit. Um, accessories, again, if the devices come with none of the accessories that are needed, like the keyboard and so forth, two hundred dollars per unit for accessories. And the accessories would be a protective case for the actual device itself, a keyboard and then a basic phone kind of slip thing so that you can throw it in when you're traveling, when you're going out, the typical carry case. Um, so roughly, probably six hundred to eight hundred dollars per unit um for the tablets. We could have a further number on that now that we're actually a little bit more certain with uh with what we're going to be, with what we're going to be getting. But I just wanted to at least present all of this to you as far as how far we've gone so far. I expect that Justin, Rich and I will continue talking about it over the next couple of weeks so that we can have a more concrete discussion about it, but I did want to at least let you know that this is what we've been discussing and get your feedback on at least what I've shared so far. Thank you.
Yeah, I hadn't planned on doing this, but I had three weeks off and they were joyous and um I'm sitting up here tonight realizing that I am getting zero joy from this anymore and I can't do this anymore. So this is my last night. Um, I need sleep. I have only so many spoons and I don't have it for this. And I said I only wanted to do this as long as I felt like I was helping the community and doing good. And this last year has sucked every ounce of joy out of me and I'm sitting up here tonight absolutely sick stomach and trying to figure out how I can get any joy out of, I I I can't, I can't do this anymore and I'm sorry. I hope somebody else can fill my seat that can find some joy in this again. Um, but I'm done. I I wanted to see our new city manager get here and and I appreciate all of you and I love all of you, but I don't have it in me. It's it's, this last year has been absolutely helpful. I know it's been help for everybody, but I'm autoimmune and I only have so many spoons a day and I and I'm giving so much to my kids during the day when I teach and I love them so much and I I need to be better also. Um, thank you guys, but um this is it for me.
I'm gonna be extremely agree because I've had to use the restroom for the last sixteen minutes. For those of you that don't know, most of us are going to be at the Lee Oregon Cities Meeting. It's the one hundredth anniversary of the League. And so we'll be up there. That's our announcement next week so the public understands. I'm truly going to miss you very much. I know, I'm counting on that for a couple of reasons.
You're the nicest person on that council.
Nicer than I am.
But so Friday, I am presenting on behalf of Art to Art Toledo at the Coastal Arts Conference down in North Bend. And then on Monday, which really begins on Sunday because I've gotta drive over and stay tonight in East, in Central Oregon because I'm still trying to get us that half a million dollars out of the state to start our arts district. And so I will be looking to you to be my touchstone.
I would like that as long as we have a plan because right now I feel like we are just absolutely floating out in the.
We are. And now that.
I can't hold it together.
Now that this is off of your plate, I'm gonna be looking to you to help me to just to get this back on track.
I would really like to help tourism and.
That makes me feel a whole lot better because I am not a tourism person. And luckily, and I I know this community will support it, but as you said, we gotta have a plan going forward. And I counted on you and Lisa, and I'm glad I can still count on you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that a lot.
And partying all the time.
I know. You 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 art it, you art on every day. Um, thank you again to Jensen Strategies, Cia, Eric. Thank you, because as you said, we wanna be able to move forward, but we wanna be able to move forward while you sleep. And without this report, we'd have just been throwing rocks into the abyss. Thank you very much. Money well spent. We greatly appreciate it. Staff, they didn't quite go far enough because y'all held it together through some very difficult crap. You kept the city going forward. And, you know, I wish Cindy hadn't left because I know how much she had to do with keeping us afloat. And I can't thank her, I can't thank all of you enough for what you've done. Pass it around, but let everybody in your staff know. Because this mayor, and I think this council agrees with me, when this city could have tumbled immensely, you guys held it together and kept us on track. And I wanna thank all of you. And with that, we are adjourned and I need to go to the restroom.